All right, I am showing it is 5:30, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is the January 4th, 2021 Livingston County Board of Commissioner meeting. And we're going to cover just a few things before we get started because 2021 is picking right up. We're 2020 left off and we are holding our meetings virtually. So if there's anyone who is new to virtual meetings, I don't know where you've been for the last year, but this is what we've been doing since about March of 2020. So our rules for the online or virtual meeting vary slightly from our in-person boardroom meetings. So although this meeting is being recorded, we want to let you know that the official minutes remain with the county clerk's office. If you wish to record the meeting on your own computer, you can please use the raise hand function at this time and you will be given permission to record the meeting. The raised hand function can be found at the bottom of the participants list on the computer or by using the more button over the device. The public is currently muted during the call to the public. Please use the raise hand function and those who do raise their hand will be called upon and unmuted one at a time. We ask that you please wait a few seconds after your microphone has been turned off and then introduce yourself. Ask for your name and address and you will have up to three minutes to address the board. Finally, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020. So commissioners, during the roll call, we will need you to please state the location that you are attending from, including your city, township, or village, along with the county and the state. And so with that part out of the way, please join me for just a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. You can now, if you'll stand, and join me with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in this nation. Thank you. Next on our agenda is roll call. So Commissioner Lawrence.
Good evening. Commissioner Lawrence reporting from, or excuse me, participating from the City of Brighton, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Reader.
I am participating from Green Oak Township, Livingston County, and the City of Howell.
Thank you. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Then Hartland Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Helserman.
I'm present, participating from Handy Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Drick.
Good evening. Jay Drick, present, City of Howell, LivCo, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioners Ajack.
Good evening. Currently participating from the City of Howell, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Griffith.
Present, participating from Genoa Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Gross.
Present, participating from Green Oak Township, Livingston County, Michigan.
Commissioner Plank.
Present, participating from Green Oak Township, County, Michigan.
Thank you. We have no correspondence on our agenda this evening, so we will move to the first call to the public. If there is any member of the public who wishes to address the board, please use your raise hand function and we will call on you to address the commissioners for up to three minutes. I see a thumbs up with Jim. Jim, if you could please provide your name and address and you can address the board for up to three minutes, please.
Hello and good evening. Yeah, my name is Jim Gonzalez and I, my wife and I reside at 3110 Golf Club Road on Earl Lake. We have lived here for about 10 years. When we first moved out here, we heard some problems with the lake and we've been investigating it ever since. We found out that beginning of December, we had a meeting with Eagle and they confirmed that our lake is considered impaired by the State of Michigan. And we've been kicking it around, an idea about having a petition passed, but with the COVID, we can't do it. So we need a, some way to do it online. We could do an online petition possibly. We've been in discussions right before COVID set in, we were talking with the Drain Commissioner about getting it done and he was on board and willing to come to a meeting to talk to us, but it got canceled because of COVID. So I was wondering if somebody on the board could work with us and get us pointed in the right direction on how to go about this.
Mr. Gonzalez, just to let you know, at the call to the public, it's not a back and forth exchange with the commissioners. So what we could do is I could make the recommendation, you contact the Board of Commissioners Secretary or Office and they could possibly address your concerns that way.
Okay, all right. Well, what, yeah, we, okay, yeah, this is all new to me. I'm not an expert at it. So, but I appreciate your time and basically what, where we're stuck with is our lake could become a dead lake. And talking to David Martin, the President of the Lake and Stream Association, he said that a dead lake would mean as much as $100 to $150,000 per property in assessed value for a lakefront property. The difference between a dead lake and a good, healthy lake. That wouldn't, that wouldn't be all of our properties, but some could reach that amount. So it is a major concern and the Clean Water Act, when, when you find out there is a problem, you know, things are supposed to happen. And so far in the 10 years that I've lived, we have not had much cooperation with the, with the government over to the top of us. So just asking.
Mr. Gonzalez, you have about 15 seconds left, just to give you notice.
Okay, all right. Well, we have had another study conducted by the Eagle and that's where that this information is coming from. So thank you and have a great night and I'll listen to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to address the commissioners? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the call to the public. You'd be waiting a long time if it was somebody else who had to close it. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Before you, we have minutes dated December 23rd, 2020. So I will look, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Madam Clerk. Support by Lawrence.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Lawrence. We will take all votes by roll call. So Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have no tabled items from previous meetings, so we will move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved Lawrence.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Helserman. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajack.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Our agenda is approved. We will move on to reports. And before we go to our State of the County video, are there any other commissioners who have any reports for this evening?
Madam Chair, I have a report I'd like to give if I could, but I want to share my screen if that's possible.
Commissioner Helserman, if you can figure it out, go for it.
Okay, here we go. We'll, we'll give her a try. See what happens. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. I do see.
Can anybody not see it?
I can see through November, Commissioner Helserman, but if you have stuff below that.
I will be moving it as we go. Every month I have given an update on the information that I can receive. The information on COVID is very sketchy. This is a summary that I've derived from a Michigan Safe Start map that's available. And I've reworked the information to make it maybe a little clearer. Done it by month. You can see here, there's a number of tests at the top here. Test administered, the positive test, then the deaths each month, and then the percentage of the positives, which is the number of positives divided by the number of tests and put into percentage. So you can see that April, March and April were pretty high here. The deaths in April were the highest. And you can see that the number of tests increases as we go through the summertime and also the number of positives. The number of deaths through the summer were pretty flat and the percentage of the tests stayed pretty low for Livingston County. In October, the picture started to change. The number of tests went up significantly, but the number of positives went up even at a higher rate of 6%. And then November was a peak with 12%, of the tests given were positive and there were 16 deaths. Now, in December, the number of deaths went up, but the number of tests and the number of positive cases went down. I'm not sure whether, some people caught it in November but died in December. I'm not exactly sure then. These are some of the totals, the March through December, the sole number of tests, which is about 66% of the population. I'm sure that some of those people had more than one test, so it's not, I would suppose, at least a third to a half of the people in Livingston County have been tested for COVID. The, the positive rate is 8,471, which is a little under 5% of the total population and a total of 76 deaths, which, which is sad. We just don't know what would be a normal year for deaths. I don't have any availability of that. But also, some information on our own livgov.com, and they only report 7,826 positive cases compared to the 8,000 on the other report. And they only report 20 or 71 deaths compared to the, compared to the number of deaths in the other report. So I just, I sent a copy to the commissioners and just for your information, just to give you a little broader perspective. And if any of you have access to more information, I'd be happy to receive it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. We'll, we'll wait for your.
Yeah, I'm share here, stop share. There we go. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners who have reports before we move to our video? Okay, seeing none, I'm not sure. Former Chair Griffith, I will turn this over to you, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the board for the new members. We're glad to have you. And as one of the colleagues on the board, we're excited to work with you and look forward to the coming years of working together. Just a little background, the State of the County Address is an annual presentation. We started it when I was Chairwoman back in, I think, 2013. Unfortunately, meeting with the public for such a presentation is not going to be able to take place when we're meeting virtually. But it's not practical this year, but the county, the State of the County Address has been videotaped. We're going to unroll that in just a few minutes. But I wanted to personally thank our county communication specialists, Allison, for her assistance and also for the coordination of the State of the County Address. She's wonderful and this isn't an easy task, whether it's virtual or in public, but she did a great job and I want to thank her publicly. The State of the County Address is important. We look simultaneously at the year that was. We review the key opportunities of the moment and we look forward, of course, to the future. As you all know, 2020 was particularly challenging. However, as a Chairwoman of the board, I was incredibly proud of the way Livingston County employees continued to serve the residents of Livingston County during a very difficult period. I also want to publicly thank your Vice Chair of the Board, Kate Lawrence. She played two roles. Not only was she the Vice Chairwoman, but she was also Chair of Finance. For anyone who has held either one of those roles, it's very time consuming and she held both at the same time while still running a business and being very involved in the community. I also want to thank Cindy Katnick. She did an exceptional job in her leadership roles as not only the Chief Financial Officer, but stepping into the county administration job. And you will see that in the video as a public thank you. She is incredibly professional and handled it with ease and I know that was not an easy task. We all know that reputations are formed in times of crisis and I believe the way our local government has responded during the pandemic has strengthened Livingston County's reputation for thoughtful, responsive, and effective government. Throughout 2020, we've demonstrated our commitment to the residents of this county. We operated with flexibility while faced with consistently changing circumstances. We achieved balance to deploy the right amount of government at the right times and we remained optimistic. All of the events associated with the 2020 Board of Commissioners were met, overcome, and successfully provided the leadership necessary to achieve goals in the best interest of the residents of Livingston County. So personally and professionally, I want to thank you and let you know that the best is yet to come. So with that, I will ask, I think Allison is going to start our video and you will also find this on our website. Oh dear. Roll it fast.
Is it full screen? Is it good to go?
Welcome. I'm Carol Griffith, Livingston County Board of Commissioners Chairwoman. Let me begin with the 2020 State of the County Address with the assurance that Livingston County is resilient, compassionate, and strong. The global pandemic continues to affect our families, our community, and our way of life. The implications of the coronavirus for our nation, state, county, and our residents are profound and will reverberate for years to come. The duration and severity of the economic contraction remains uncertain, but one thing is for certain. From great adversity comes enduring strength. 2020 has certainly brought with it some challenges and I thank the Livingston County workforce and leadership that has pivoted from your core activities to telecommuting and attending virtual meetings, responding to emails and countless phone calls, all with making tough decisions and providing strength and guidance to those we work with and serve. Livingston County leadership continues to work remotely, yet collaboratively. Our elected officials, judicial services, and department directors continue to be hard at work, creating and adhering to the best practices and protocols. The health and the welfare of our employees and the citizens we serve is unquestionably paramount. Our Board of Commissioners and workforce as a whole has quickly adopted and learned to Zoom. Pandemic may be the official word for 2020, but we think the phrase "you're muted" would be a better fit, don't you? Despite many disruptions, the Board of Commissioners have worked diligently for those we serve. To date, we have passed 270 resolutions. 2020 certainly brought with it some changes and challenges. In March, we experienced an unexpected vacancy with the sudden death of Vice Chair Commissioner Dolan. All of those who knew him can attest. No one exemplified a quiet strength more than late Commissioner Dennis Dolan. As an exemplary public servant, Commissioner Dolan shared meaningful engagement and 17 years of dedication to his constituents. His dedication and thoughtful leadership to our county will be forever remembered and cherished. During 2020, we happily welcomed Commissioners Jay Gross and Jay Dreck to the team of nine county commissioners. As 2021 begins, you will notice many new faces on our Board of Commissioners. We sincerely thank Commissioners Bob Bizzat, Gary Childs, and William Green for their combined 17 years of service to the community. They displayed a profound commitment of staying engaged and serving on behalf and alongside our residents. We wish them each the best in their future endeavors. Soon we will be welcoming Commissioners Carol Sue Reader, Mitchell Zajak, and Brenda Plank to our board. We look forward to working with each of the newly elected commissioners to continue the legacy of strong leadership for Livingston County. The end of 2019 brought us a vacancy with the loss of County Administrator Ken Hinton. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to recognize Cindy Katnick, Livingston County's Chief Financial Officer. She stepped up into the position of Acting County Administrator and serving throughout the majority of 2020, filling the significant role. Cindy provided steadfast leadership throughout emotional and challenging times for our county. She continues to offer an ethical dimension, essential in making our organization strong while still focusing on solutions. Our executive search for a new county administrator brought to us Nathan Byrd, who joined our team in July and has been hard at work ever since. We are grateful for his experience in state, county, and municipal leadership and his passion for government work that has led him to our county. In just a very short time, it's become very clear that Nathan is the right fit for our county. Now, I'd like to introduce to you County Administrator Nathan Byrd, who will provide a look into the county's strong financial standing.
Thank you, Carol. It's an honor to be working here at Livingston County and I'm grateful for the opportunity. 2020 was a unique and challenging year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. From the outset, commissioners took necessary and responsible action to restrict discretionary spending, place a moratorium on hiring, and participate in federal and state funding opportunities related to the pandemic. These actions, together with a history of wise fiscal stewardship, has enabled Livingston County to weather the initial storm and move into 2021 on solid financial footing. The 2021 budget was unanimously approved by the board in November. It's a balanced and responsible budget that will allow the county to continue providing a high level of services for our citizens. In October, we were notified that our AAA bond rating was reaffirmed. We're one of only five counties statewide to hold that distinction, and we continue to operate with the lowest county tax mileage rate in the state. As with many other governments in Michigan, addressing our pension liability has been a key area of focus. Over $23 million in excess payments have been made over the last nine years and the 2021 budget includes another excess payment of $1.2 million. This will continue to be a priority moving forward. We were recently notified that the county is again the recipient of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government Finance Officers Association. We are proud of that award and we express our appreciation to our Fiscal Services Department for their hard work. The budget process is a truly collaborative effort and our elected officials, directors, and staff will continue to work together to ensure the county finances remain strong as we navigate the years ahead. Although some of the plans we initially had for 2020 were sidetracked due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we were still able to accomplish projects of significance. The many years of dedication, planning, and thoughtfulness that went into developing Fillmore County Park were celebrated in September. The park proudly offers visitors the use of the Jack E. LaBelle Sports Field, named in honor of late Commissioner Jack LaBelle, and the Hinton Trail, named in honor of late County Administrator Ken Hinton. The county thanks our numerous partners for their perseverance to help move this park from an idea to reality. Fillmore County Park is open to the public, so please make a plan to visit soon. We would be remiss not to mention our election division's colossal undertaking of conducting three major elections this year. 2020 has been a historic year for elections with record numbers of voter turnout and ballots cast. The largest number of elections inspectors ever was trained by our clerk's office to assist in the election process. We recognize our county clerk, Elizabeth Hunley, and elections coordinator, Joe Bridgeman, for their countless hours spent devoted to county elections. We would like to take a moment to thank our residents for their remarkable response to the 2020 census. Our final response rate was the highest in Michigan and earned us the 15th highest spot in the entire nation. Our high response rate means a great deal for our community. Census data informs how funding is distributed to programs we all use, like schools, healthcare, and roads. Thank you for doing your part to help shape the future of Livingston County.
Ten months ago, our county, along with the rest of our nation, began to feel the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. We know it's been a strange and unprecedented time for you, your families, and all of our residents. I can assure you that Livingston County has been and continues to proactively monitor the COVID-19 situation in our community. We have and are proactively working and seeking guidance from both the State of Michigan and the Livingston County Health Department. Our first priority has been and will continue to be to ensure the health and the well-being of our employees while making sure we maintain critical services for the public we serve. The Board of Commissioners would like to personally thank Senator The Board of Commissioners would like to personally thank Senators Tice, Representative Bowlin, and Representative Appel for their engagement and steadfast attention to our important issues. Our collaboration with the Economic Development Council of Livingston County, Ann Arbor Spark, and our local Chamber of Commerce reflect the reality that great things are achieved for our community when we work together. This is truly a unique collaboration that only happens here in Livingston County. Now, more than ever, the importance of our local nonprofit community cannot be overstated. Our county is seeing a significant increase in the number of residents utilizing our nonprofits. Everything from housing assistance, personal need bags, and certainly food assistance has been collectively provided by these crucial organizations. We thank all of the nonprofits for their resounding support in our residents during these demanding times. Despite the challenges that this pandemic has brought about, it has also revealed something about us. We're a community of people who truly care about one another. We're a community where teachers spend hours online to educate their students using innovative techniques. We're protecting our senior citizens and at-risk residents by running errands, delivering meals, and reaching out to those who may be isolated at home. Without a doubt, COVID-19 has illuminated the heroic work of our first responders, public safety, and the healthcare providers. These men and women put themselves on the front line every day to offer their indispensable services. Throughout this year, our Health Department staff, led bravely by Diane McCormick, has worked seven days a week to respond to the pandemic. To date, 3,225 hours have been spent on case investigation. 570 people were tested at a drive-through COVID clinic held in conjunction with Washtenaw Community's Health Department. This unprecedented public health response has been carried out in addition to the usual public health services. Health staff have been creative in modifying services in order to ensure that residents could continue to utilize the services like the WIC program and safely receive needed immunizations. Our emergency management team, led by Therese Cremonte, has been instrumental in the activation of the county's Emergency Operations Center and the distribution of pallets of personal protective equipment to healthcare providers, schools, nonprofits, and public safety. Since the start of the pandemic, our Sheriff's Office has provided assistance to Gleaner's Food Bank. From March to June, 600,000 pounds of food was sorted, packaged, and delivered to those in need. Sheriff Office detectives have completed 43 deliveries of food and medicine to elderly and at-risk individuals. For all of our Health Department staff, public safety officers, paramedics, dispatchers, and healthcare providers, we know the hours you are working and the sacrifices you are making. Please note, we see you, we respect you, and we deeply appreciate you. To all of our residents whose work is vital in our community's health, we're grateful for you. From our local grocery store workers, truck drivers, and delivery services who have worked so hard to make sure that we have the things we need, to the custodial staff who thoroughly clean and sterilize our workplaces, and to the others who work is essential, thank you. Here at Livingston County, we put our residents first and strive to set the standard in public service. Our employee recognition program recognizes the dedication and exemplary customer service that our employees display in their everyday work. This year, we've had 156 nominations and are proud to present our winners. They are Steve Allen, a paramedic from our EMS department; Deputy Ray Marino, a deputy from our Sheriff's Office; Jaclyn Kaminsky, a research attorney from our Circuit Court; and Gail Cook, a custodian from our Facility Services Department. Congratulations to all of our winners and all of our employees who were nominated. We're always known to have great people working for Livingston County, but now we're absolutely sure of our employees are extraordinary leaders. These last 10 months have been trying, but through it all, our employees have worked every day to serve our residents. The Solid Waste Program expanded their participation with the Big Red Barrel, allowing our residents more access to dispose of unused medications and sharps at seven secure locations. Our Veteran Services Office financially assisted 92 veterans, helping them with utility bills, rent, medical bills, mental health services, and food assistance. Veterans could even make curbside appointments for their claim processes. Our LETS transportation has gone above and beyond to provide over 800 rides for those with crucial needs, such as dialysis and medical appointments. They partnered with Meals on Wheels, Bountiful Harvest, and the Salvation Army to provide over 1,800 meals and food kits. They also provided transportation to COVID testing sites and have been running COVID lab samples to Lansing for each of the three first responder testing clinics, which were hosted by St. Joseph Mercy Hospital and our Health Department. In an effort to make our local children's birthdays during the shutdown as special as possible, our Sheriff's Office participated in 40 drive-by parades. We could spend hours on the remarkable ways our employees supported and encouraged our community. We invite you to visit our website and take a look at our 2020 Annual Report to see all that your Livingston County offices accomplished. In closing, despite the challenges we've experienced this year, I am proud to stand before you as a member of our greater Livingston County family. Our nonprofit community has been going above and beyond to serve those in need. Our first responders, healthcare providers, and essential workers have shown us what it is to be heroes as they have cared and protected our residents. By making prudent and long-term decisions, our county will enter 2021 on solid financial footing. Our county employees will continue to persevere to ensure our community has the services we need to thrive. We will pull through COVID-19 together and become a stronger community because of it. The unity that has characterized our community throughout the pandemic, our spirit of caring, the dedication to overcome any and all obstacles to get things done, that is what makes us a resilient, compassionate, and strong county. Thank you for joining us. Stay safe and healthy. And remember those words from Martin Luther King Jr., "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge."
Well done, Carol.
Yeah, thank you.
Very, very well done. Well, we will move on if there are no other reports by Commissioners, because I'm ready to hand this meeting off to whoever is elected as the Board Chair. So we have no consent agenda items today. So we'll move on to our resolutions for consideration. And our first one this evening is Resolution 2021-01-001, Election of Board Chair for 2021. At this time, I will go ahead and open the floor for nominations for our Board Chair, please.
Um, Secretary.
Yes, Commissioner Gross.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Wes Nakagiri to be Chairman of the Board for the next fiscal year.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for our 2021 Board Chair?
I move to close nominations.
Support Zajak.
Okay, so we have a motion to close nominations by Commissioner Helserman, second by Commissioner Zajak. So, um, Mr. Rich McNulty, am I going to take a separate roll call on the motion to close nominations? Okay, so this will be on the motion to close nomination. Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Nominations are closed. So now we will move on to a roll call vote on the nomination on the resolution of Commissioner Gross nominated Commissioner Nakagiri for Chair of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners for 2021. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioner Nakagiri, I'm very happy to hand the meeting off to you at this point. Congratulations, Chairman Nakagiri.
Thank you very much, Clerk Hunley. I just want to thank my colleagues on the board for their support and in my nomination to become Chair of the Board. I am very humbled. It's a great, it is truly a great honor to lead such a fine organization. Livingston County has had a long history, a long history of success in delivering services to the county, county residents in a cost-effective manner. I intend to continue on with that tradition, and I look forward to the support of not only my colleagues on the board, but the entire staff of Livingston County as well as the residents. I am an open book. I welcome feedback from all. You know, I'm not going to say we'll always agree, but one thing I'll say, I'll always listen. And it's through that I look forward to the vigorous discussion of issues, debate that allows various points of view to come forward, and civil discussion. And then coming up to a decision that benefits the citizens of this great county. So thank you once again, and look forward to another successful year. With that being said, I will move on in the agenda to the next item, and that's Resolution 2021-01-002, the election of the Board Vice Chair for the year 2021. Are there nominations for Board Vice Chair?
Mister, Mister Chair, I would like to nominate Carol Griffith to serve as Vice Chair.
Commissioner Lawrence nominates Commissioner Griffith. Are there other nominations?
I move to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Carol Griffith for Vice Chair.
Support Zajak.
Prior to that, can we get, do we need a second on that resolution for Commissioner Griffith? Okay, thank you.
So we've got a motion to close nominations, so we'll vote on that.
Okay, so a roll call for closing nominations, Clerk Hunley.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll take a roll call vote on the motion to elect Commissioner Griffith to the position of Board Vice Chair for the year 2021, Clerk Hunley.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreck.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I, for one, am very appreciative of Carol Griffith stepping up to be the Vice Chair. It's, she's been the chair in 2020 and previously. So I'm giving her fair warning that I'll be seeking her counsel quite frequently. I don't see the need to reinvent the wheel, and so I appreciate her. And we thank her ahead of time for all the time she's going to spend counseling me.
Good Mr. Chair.
We'll move on in the agenda to the next resolution, 2021-01-3. That's a resolution adopting rules for the Livingston County Board of Commissioners and to establish meeting dates for 2021. Is there a motion?
Don't move, Gross.
Support Lawrence.
Motion by Gross, support by Lawrence. Any discussion?
Mister Chair, I have a question. Some of the video or the Zoom meetings are only, they will supposedly cease at some point. Do our rules then go back to normal, or do they stay? Will we have to readjust our rules at that time? Because there's, there were times when, you know, I just wonder if our rules are set up to go back to normal after Zoom meetings are no longer needed. Could Rich McNulty talk about that?
Sure. The rules as amended take into account the changes in law for 2021 and how they could change over the year. So they do fully comport with the statute. They don't go back to how it was, but they go forward with how the law will be post-COVID and post the emergency orders, but throughout 2021. In other words, in the past, you used to be able to, used to be able to participate virtually for certain things. The law is very specific now that you can, that at post-COVID, you would count towards a quorum, people who are participating virtually, but you can only participate virtually for a medical condition or military service.
May I answer your question? Yes. Other?
Mister Chairman. I guess also a question for Mister McNulty. So what is it going to take for us to be able to get back to what heretofore has been normal, Commissioner meetings, i.e. in person? Is that going to require a specific executive order or ruling from the Health Department that the coast is clear?
It will go back upon, upon the act-
It will go back upon the expiration absent another order that either extends it, a separate legislative enactment, or a local order of emergency.
And so, at this point in time, is that expiration date, if I recall, is that December 31st of 2021?
I would have to double-check that, but I believe you're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the rules? Seeing none, we'll need a roll call vote to adopt the rules for 2021. Clerk Hunley, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Naka-Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to, before we do call to the public, I would like to, and I'll email this out after the, directly after the meeting, but I wanted to let the commissioners know of the committee assignments for the upcoming year. And so, if you have pen and paper, you can jot this down, but if you don't have pen and paper, you don't worry, because I'll be emailing this out shortly. For the Finance Committee, Commissioner Lawrence will be the Chair, Commissioner Plank will be the Vice Chair. For the General Government and Health and Human Services Committee, Commissioner Zajak will be the Chair, Commissioner Lawrence will be the Vice Chair. Members on that committee will include Commissioner Helserman and Commissioner Plank. On the Public Safety and Infrastructure Committee, Commissioner Gross will be the Chair, Commissioner Griffith will be the Vice Chair. Members of the committee will be Commissioner Reader and Commissioner Drick. And then, the last one that I'd like to announce for this evening is the Personnel Committee. Commissioner Helserman will be the Chair, Commissioner Griffith will be the Vice Chair, and the member will be Commissioner Zajak. So, like I said, if you didn't get all that written down, I will send it out an email after the meeting tonight. Anyway, with that being said, we'll move, actually have a question for Mister McNulty. Do the appointments need a vote for confirmation?
No, sir.
Okay. All righty, thank you. So, with that being said, we'll move to call to the public. If there is anybody wishing to address the Board of Commissioners tonight, if you would please use the Zoom Raise Your Hand function, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. Alls we ask is, before you speak, to give us your name and address, and also wait a few seconds after being called upon, so that we capture all of your comments. Are there any, is there anybody out there that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners?
Mister Chair, when everybody else is done, I would like to have a prayer during the call to the public. I'll give everybody else a chance to do their call to the public first.
Sure. I would certainly, Commissioner Helsman. I see Sheriff Murphy with his hand up.
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just want to welcome the new commissioners. I sent you a email off to the side with my contact information, as long as the undershare's contact information. You know, we're an open book. We look forward to working with the new commissioners, as well as the more seasoned, notice I didn't call anybody old. At any rate, just welcome aboard, looking forward to a good year, looking forward to, or glad that we closed the books on 2020. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Sheriff Murphy. I don't see any other hands on the Raise Your Hand function. I don't see any hands raised in the video screens, so I am going to close the call to the public and ask for an adjournment. Sorry, Commissioner Helserman.
Okay. I just, this is, we've had a good year, we've had a hard year. The next two days in our country are going to be historic. The vote in Georgia and the discussion of the Electoral College votes, and I just would like to ask, say a prayer for our country and for our county. Our Father, we thank you so much for our country, for the peace and the freedom that you've given to us. I ask that this would continue. I ask that there will be peace in our country, there will be, first of all, truth and justice, that there will be truth and justice in the election of the senators in Georgia, and what is true and true and just will happen in the Electoral College. Lord, there are, there's no way that we can bring peace, because there are going to be people that are dissatisfied, no matter what happens. But we ask that you would give us peace and give us your help during this time, as you have through the many years of our country. We ask these things for Christ's sake. Amen. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Helsman. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Lawrence.
Support.
Motion by Lawrence, support by Griffith. Clerk Hunley, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Naka-Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn carries.
Thank you very much. We'll see you again Wednesday, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.